Meeting in shortly. Council members, if you can come back to the dais, please. Council members could return to the dais. Township manager, if you could return to the dais. Isa. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Before we move on to next item on the agenda, I would like to make an agenda motion. I'd like to nominate prospective members of the VOTI Park Advisory Board. I'd like to nominate Ken Hoffman, Chuck Powers, George Raskakis, Clifford Weisel, Sharon Siegel, Alan Schoffman, and Solomon Rosenberg.
Second.
Seven.
You don't need a formal resolution. Just a nomination.
Just a nomination, a second.
These people will be listed for a formal vote at the next meeting.
Question: Can they meet prior to that formal vote?
Those seven people wanting to get together, nothing prevents them from getting together.
Can we offer addresses and telephone numbers and contact information so they can get together?
If their needle is in the body, it has to have one. It's an open meeting.
It has to be an open meeting, right.
So let's not encourage— I mean, I think that there needs to be minutes now at these meetings. So let's wait until we appoint them and then we'll have—
Also chairman?
Yes. I'd like to also nominate Ken Hoffman for chairman of the board.
Second.
Again, there's no second. This will be put into a formal resolution at the next meeting. These will be the people who the council has nominated for a formal vote. It will be listed on the consent agenda for any other consent agenda, like any other consent resolution.
Okay. Next item is public hearing adoption of ordinances. There are none, so we're going to be moving right into good and welfare. This is where any member of the public can talk for any time—for five minutes for any subject in town.
Council member just would like to say one thing. Tonight, we are going to be voting on the adoption of the budget. I have said previously, and we had requested to see what a zero increase budget would look like. I would like very much to vote for the zero increase budget. We were given a piece of information on our documentation at one point, two or three council meetings ago, saying that this is what a zero increase budget would look like, but this might have impact on services and on the 2013 budget. Having lived through the 2009 after we had a zero increase budget in 2008, which involved layoffs and others, I do have great concern, and I am hoping that we may get a little bit more information from you, because I don't feel I have the information that I need to be able to vote comfortably. I don't want to find us with facing layoffs next year and things that might have been anticipated or finding—I mean, I know that nothing—you know, you can't predict perfectly, but I would like to know what—when that was written, what kinds of things we were thinking about. I understand I had requested Mr. Turrus to prepare a resolution, which I knew he probably couldn't, but nonetheless, a resolution that would guarantee that we would have no layoffs, particularly no layoffs next year. And obviously, he says that's not council—it's not council's decision to make. But nonetheless, I wanted to raise it before good and welfare, so people could comment if they wished. As I said, I would like to vote for this budget, but I feel I'm missing one piece of information that I need to make a responsible decision. Thank you.
Just to clarify some things. Mr. Manager, the difference between the 1.9 and the 0% budget is $263,000. Is that the number?
That—that's the number in the—the amount of cuts we made, plus there is additional revenue that we were able to anticipate. So the—the cuts to bring this down to zero—I have it in the presentation. I'll show it in the presentation. We can discuss those cuts. But just—to talk about, you know, Councilwoman Toffler's concerns. Those concerns or the cuts—what—I was trying to relate in the cuts—I was just trying to make the council aware of the potential implications of the cuts. I wasn't saying that something was imminent. So any concerns that we have over not raising the budget 2% or any concerns over these particular cuts are directly related to those cuts. So one of those cuts is $100,000 reduction in overtime costs for public works. So we have to look at the impact of that particular cut. It—it doesn't impact the entire budget. It impacts that particular area. So I brought—in making that cut, I brought the—the public works overtime budget back down to the 2011 level. The obvious implication of those cuts—if that particular cut—is if we have some sort of issue, if we have a real bad storm, it could be possible that we may not have enough money. But nobody knows exactly if that's going to occur. So that is what I'm saying by just saying that those things were possible. So as I go through my summary later on in the meeting, we can talk about those individual reductions and what the potential impact of those reductions could be.
And just for the public's knowledge, if we—if—for some reason, there was layoffs. Layoffs doesn't come arbitrarily from council. You have to put together a layoff plan. It goes to civil service. Civil services then has to approve your plan. If they don't approve your plan—correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney—the—the union also has the right to submit their counterplan before layoffs go forward, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
May I—I don't even—
I—I'm just putting that up—
We're not even there. That—that is—
But I'm not going—I don't think that I'm—but if—to lay—Councilwoman Toffler's concerns about layoffs, I'm just giving the public the opportunity to understand it's not just, "Okay, we didn't do this, and now it's there as a layoff."
Mr. Man—Mr. Mayor, can I just make a suggestion? You're going to have this evening several separate public portions. You have your regular good and welfare, which you have all the time. Then, when it comes time for the adoption of two separate budgets, you have the Cedar Lane budget and you have the general township budget. Those require two separate hearings. So—and I believe the manager is going to make a presentation on the budget.
Yes.
If I may, I would suggest that during the good and welfare portion, deal with everything but the budget.
Okay.
And then, when it comes time for the budget, for the mayor—for the manager to make his presentation prior to opening the public portion, which will be specifically dedicated with no time limit on the budget. And then after that, you'll have the Cedar Lane budget, which you will again have a separate hearing. So if you keep it in that order, I think it might be a better presentation and—and make better sense.
Thank you. Good Welfare is now open. Mr. Rose.
Howard Rose, Teaneck resident. Good evening. I just want to raise a concern regarding communication. Approximately eight days ago or so, I received a letter from Councilman Katz, and it was in regard to the VOTI Park situation. The letter was informative. The letter was germane to the knowledge that I think residents should have. But my concern is the first contact is coming from a council member. It's not on behalf of the council, and it is about specifically township business. And I—I guess I'm wondering why the council slash IE manager slash actual government personnel aren't the first to communicate with us regarding important issues. I—I'm not—I'm not chastising anyone on this, but I am concerned that we now have a new computer system, and I'm wondering if, in fact, that system is built so that people who are interested might provide their email addresses so that the township has a listing to send out a variety of different types of important information on a timely basis so that it can be best utilized. And it's not just the use of VOTI Park. It's an impending storm, or a snow crisis, or whatever it may be. I—I was hoping that that's what our new computer system and website for the township would do. It would be utilized as a tool to keep residents informed for as many needs as are deemed reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Power.
Ruth Brower, Teaneck, New Jersey. My issue, of course, is the red swamp maple tree. I would just like to thank the council members, Dr. Toffler, Mr. Katz, and the many people who have supported me in my effort to save my home from this destructive tree. And I would also like to say to Mr. Brower that this was not a—an assault or standoff with you. It was simply—I was trying to save my home, which I have worked so hard for. Thank you.
Ma'am.
I'm Rachel Lawrence, Teaneck, New Jersey. As I walk around Teaneck, I pick up a lot of recyclables strewn about. I also live in a multifamily dwelling, where I pick up large cardboard boxes by our dumpster to take to the recycling center. My immediate concern is that there are many multifamily dwellings in our township that are not complying with the township ordinance regarding recycling. According to the code, the owners or operators of multifamily dwellings are to inform their tenants each year of their responsibility to recycle, to provide containers as required and determined by the township manager, and to post recycling information in all common areas. There are penalties for noncompliance. This is not happening. Who is responsible for enforcing this law? Our overburdened health department? The state does permit any other municipal staff to be empowered by the municipality for this purpose. It is unfair for complying owners to incur the expense of obeying the rules while others can ignore the law and the expense. The township also loses by this oversight. We lose the income from the recyclables and state recycling fund money. As to our streets, parks, and parking lots, tennis courts, and bushes littered with cans and plastic and glass bottles, we could at least provide recycling bins for their disposal for a start. On Bergenfield's Main Street, there is a three-can unit, which instead of commercial advertising, proclaims Bergenfield Recycles. Each bin is labeled for the recyclable it holds. These are just a few suggestions. You know, we keep talking about beautifying our town, and it's so sad to see litter strewn all over Teaneck. Unfortunately, it looks trashy.
Thank you. Dr. Pruitt?
I want to just thank the township for recognizing the girls' and boys' basketball team. That made me feel real good, but one of the things that people don't know is that—
Dr. Pruitt, your name for the record, please.
My name is—you said, "Dr. Pruitt," Henry Pruitt. That's my name.[802.73][802.73](Laughter). One of the things that—the people don't know, and they probably should know, is that to play basketball or interscholastic sports in New Jersey, the requirement is—is a D average, or 1.0. Teaneck, the requirement to play is 2.0, and we're on the way to make it 2.5, which would be the highest academic requirement in the state to play on any kind of sport. Just wanted you to know, the quality of Teaneck High School is fantastic. Thank you very much.
Artvatski, Teaneck—no, Cedar Lane, Teaneck.
You don't have Cedar Lane.
No, I don't have one. That's right. Garrison Avenue, Teaneck.[853.36][853.36](Laughter). See, I—I see what happened. I get nervous when I get up here. But I am conscious of—and you're aware of too—that I have been sending back and forth a number of emails regarding an issue that I think is very important to me personally in terms of saving energy and also to the economic health of Cedar Lane. And that is the installation of bus shelters at the busiest locations in the streetscape area, which is—has—was planned for bus shelters, but has never had them since the construction was finished. I have spent years walking to and walking by and driving by the Chestnut Plaza area with people waiting in the rain, in the snow, in the 95-degree heat. You know, what I said in my letter. There's always people there, because besides residents, there's shoppers there. Shoppers who have bags on them, waiting for the bus to take them out of Teaneck, and they wait in the sun, rain, and wind. And I thought it was—and I got to give credit to the manager. Manager's been responsive. He answered my emails and described what's going on. We are getting one westbound bus shelter. That was the shelter I used to use, or the location I used to take the bus when I worked in Wood Ridge after I had broken a body part. But—so I remember waiting in the sun there, too. But—but I think the main thing is—the real heart of this is to get a bus shelter in front of Chestnut Plaza. And there are so many Teaneck residents and quite a few Teaneck employees and quite a few Teaneck shoppers—Cedar Lane shoppers, okay? Because they're always there. They're there in the rain, they're there midday, they're there late at night. That we should have that bus shelter there. And then I—I recently found out from the manager that some singular businessperson said they did not want it. They requested that it not be installed. So where—here we have a situation, and it's a request, Mayor. It's not a requirement, and I don't think there's a legal requirement that would—we would—would prevent the town refusing that request from that one business owner, which, by the way, is—remains anonymous to me. We're not allowed—I don't know if we're not allowed to know, to have to present an open or no. I mean, my name is on all my stuff. If this person doesn't want it, I don't know. There's a lot of uncomfortable people. I really think the town—and I think the manager—should reconsider and have this bus shelter put in with some compromise to meet whatever is needed. We don't have property holders adjacent to municipal property don't have the right to to refuse a light pole, or a fire hydrant, or a parking meter, or anything else. So I don't think that this request is anything more than a request, and I would sincerely, sincerely like it overruled. Thank you.
Good evening again. Let's see if we can limit the feedback. David Spielman. I'm actually here to speak about the clerk. Every time I come, with all due respect, she looked exhausted. We're working her to the bone, and I really hope that we could find some wiggle room, if not to get a proper deputy clerk to help alleviate the pressure on her, then to at least find some volunteer—experienced volunteers to help with the workload. Again, with all due respect, we're all only human, and we mere mortals, when we get exhausted, we make mistakes, which obviously, none of us want to happen. So I'm—I just wanted to suggest and recommend that we get a deputy clerk or someone to help out, Ms. Evelina. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. McKeon?
Hi, Leslie McKeon, Teaneck. First, as a taxpayer and resident, and also as a board member of Teaneck 2020, I would like to thank Dr. Chuck Powers for his work, his research, and his consultation in getting the issue around the VOTI Park contamination somewhat resolved. And I'm sorry that more people didn't attend the Teaneck 2020 panel discussion with four national experts in this field, because it was fascinating. It was clear and comprehensive and totally reassuring. Except for Barbara Toffler, who was instrumental in arranging the panel, I'm sorry that council members did not choose to join us and listen and participate. It's your loss. And I would like to invite anybody who is interested to consult the Teaneck 2020 website, which has information on that presentation. I also, again, want to express my sympathy and concur with Ruth Brower, because I think the situation with her tree is so silly. You know, I see it as a headline in the in The Onion. You know, "Council majority and manager suggest resident to build a moat to protect her house from the encroaching root system of a tree, which is intent on destroying the foundation of her house." It is a ordinary, ugly, and already mutilated tree, and I think we should just take it down. I was going to speak about the budget. I won't speak about that right now, but I have spoken before at council meetings about my feelings of consolidation of services with other towns, without which I don't feel we can do very much more than nibble at the edges of any budget. But we can take some big nibbles. I have suggested a buy-and-co-op, which would give us more leverage over the costs of our purchases. Our manager says we already have lower prices than a small co-op of a few North Bergen towns. That's very nice, but it's not really responsive to the issue that I have raised. If 20, or 30, or 50 towns in Bergen County organized a purchasing co-op—not little towns—Teaneck, Hackensack, Englewood, Bergenfield, Dumont, Tenerife, and the like—we would all save money. That's why so many of us shop at Costco. You get more bang for the buck when you buy in quantity. And I gave—and I will give it again, there is just such a co-op in Minnesota called Waco or Wacko, Western Area City Council Cooperative, and if anyone wants the phone number to consult with them, this is a fairly large regional co-op. Finally, I support a favorable environment for commercial development that we can all live with. And I realize that property is privately owned, but as a town, I think we can reach out, and there are plenty of people who are trained to do just that. And we have a wonderful hometown resource to help us find some professional people in Loretta Weinberg. And finally, back to the four-day, five-day work week. The world operates on a five-day work week. The federal government, state, county government, banks, private businesses, and contractors all operate on a five-day work week. I appreciate the desire of the employees to sustain a four-day work week, but I do not think that a four-day work week and five days of municipal services are mutually exclusive. And I think scheduling can be worked out, so we have both five days of municipal services and a four-day work week for those people who want it. And I'd like to see some effort in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Alex Raschin, Teaneck. I have two questions related to four-days' week, raised at last meeting, and one, if I have what's this time, relates to software for clerk. Do we have a contract for four-days' working week with the manager? I never heard, actually—I was told by Isa that manager is never here on Fridays. I never heard—maybe my fault—in education about CEO having four-days' week. Nor overtime, well, payment to CEO normally, well, just staying late if necessary comes with a big salary and a position. While we can—we can just argue about what kind of damage Teaneck residents get from a four-days' week, okay? I think it's quite clear what kind of loss we have with a manager working for four days. That means that he cannot interview alternative offers of professional services or educated and knowledgeable residents, and that certainly might lead to a problem that VOTI had, that just tilts his priorities, how to do things in this direction, okay? Then he also could walk around the town and see that parks are neglected and—and see what's necessary. He could see also, walk and see what kind of maintenance is necessary on on the property. So we just basically have to look at it and ask seriously a question. Can we afford a four-day manager? Okay? There are no 20% bonuses, I think, we are paying. Okay, that's question one. Question two was, well, related to the last meeting's just talk by by Dr. Toffler. I have to say that I don't have any personal animosity to Dr. Toffler. Just—the thing is that when she takes the right position, I really don't care much whether it's for right reasons, or wrong reasons—I mean, personal, okay? Don't care. Right position is right position, okay? So again, I cannot distinguish, okay? And I don't try. So now I'm in the election, okay? Election is competitive business. You make a blunder, it might cost. That's elections, okay? What happened, actually, I was dismayed at the aggressive attack by Dr. Toffler at the mayor. There's a lot of things to be criticized for, but not what Dr. Toffler did. She just a kind of publicly expressed suspicions that there is a conspiracy on the—well, on the overlapping schedule, which excludes her personally, and this might violate the law. We found, actually, that no laws was violated, and I think the proper attitude would be: first, learn the law; second, okay, find the proof that something happened, and only that go public. Please, okay? That's—that's a thing I—I suggest will be much, much better. Second thing, it resembles, unfortunately, the previous situation with a lawsuit. A lot of just accusations flying. Again, it's—it's also on on your brochure, that you are going to be a kind of investigator, seeing who—who follows the law, who is not. Be it right—do it right way, okay? And, well, just your slogan on your your sign is putting Teaneck first. I—I guess will just should mean that Teaneck taxpayers, not not personal things, okay? And therefore, I think it would be a very right move to reimburse residents for $20,000 or something like that in legal expenses, which came from ill thought-through lawsuit. You lost it. You misjudged law and and evidence, okay? Please do that. It might help. Voluntarily do that, because I don't see—because I see it on agenda. Some—something, well, just about that. I do not want angry exchanges with accusations to see here. Do voluntarily. It might help. I don't know whether it will satisfy everybody, but that would be a good move. That's my suggestion. Okay, now, now, well, the third question is to Councilwoman Parker. There were some objections to software, okay, which were not clarified. I would like to hear them.
Mr. Raschin.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker.
Mildred, Teaneck. First of all, I want to clarify some misinformation that's been disseminated in the community. It's election time. I'm getting a barrage of emails, negative emails, direct— I'm getting a barrage of emails, negative emails directed at Barbara Toffler, who is a friend of the community, and you need to understand that you are all elected officials. We are nonpartisan. All of that, all those attacks, which I am very suspicious about, Mr. Katz, for example, you keep on talking about Barbara Toffler needs to reimburse TNEC, but you failed to set, to reimburse her. She spent cash money out of her pocket for that lawsuit and didn't ask for a dime. We could have avoided the lawsuit had you listened when I asked, and members of the community, that you please give her her due process. Instead, you chose to move forward with the censure, and as a result, that in itself caused TNEC taxpayers the lawsuit. So, taking into consideration the fact that she, A, spent her own money, B, you too are equally if responsible for the lawsuit, because you had an opportunity, and many of your council colleagues as well, because it took four votes, and it was five, including Monica Honus, who's not here, and you chose not to do that. You chose to move forward, and I wonder why we don't hear about the bill, the legal services bill? Okay, first of all, let's get the facts straight, okay? Because I know, the judge threw it out based on, not the merits or the contents, like my former person, resident, just said, but it was based on the timeline, because the lawsuit was filed too late, okay? And to threaten to put people's names out in a negative manner and destroy her reputation because she's up there representing the TNEC residents is unfortunate. You yourself were driving a car with a cellphone, and that's reckless, and no one talked about that. That wasn't politicized. You yourself sitting up there caused many, has caused a many lawsuits under your tenure as councilman, but no one is attacking you and talk about reimbursed the town. You yourself, okay, have put one council member after the other, and is the main cause of the divisiveness in this town. Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Hamidudin, I wish you would manage these meetings more. They're unprofessional. It's a big disappointment, what's going on. No one should be subjected or mistreated in a manner in this, in this galley, okay? Yet, under your tenure, I see it. Okay, I don't know what is the problem that y'all have with Dr. Toffler. She's not doing the job of Dr. Toffler, she's doing the job of the entire community, okay? We elected her, all right? And you need to stand down when it comes to sending out those emails, because it pisses me off. You're driving TNEC in the wrong direction, and when you get, when you put out negativity, you're gonna get it back, and you're not gonna like it. You're not your own man, okay? You're not your own man, or obviously, because judging from the way you vote, and you're the butt of jokes, okay? This says, we have him in our pocket, all right? Mr. Gerson, establishing a pattern of picking on women, Sandy Loth on the planning board, Barbara Toffler when she was on the planning board, and Senator Weinberg. Stand down. These women are not toys, and you need to respect the fact that they are professionals, and they're your elders. It's unfortunate that you all need a class in etiquette, with the exception of Lizette Parker. Mr. Stern, I've got this email here, and each one of you may comment about it, and it's unfortunate to give advice with regards to approving more religious institutions, given the fact that we need more houses paying taxes in this town. That's not putting TNEC first. So when you start to throw stones and start to assassinate someone's character, and for what reason, I ask myself, what could it be? What could it be? What is your problem with Barbara Toffler? I ask myself that over and over and over again, okay? Now, it needs to stop, and you need to act in a more professional manner and start telling the truth, because I know, all the information, okay, that you've been disseminated is twisting, it is lies. The lawsuit wasn't about money. She did not ask for one penny. And then I'm up here to defend Dr. Toffler. She can do that on her own. But I'm there on the side of what's right and what's just, and you guys are wrong.
Thank you.
Do the job that people elected you to do, and stop playing games with people's lives.
Ms. Wilson?
Gloria Wilson, TNEC, New Jersey. I'm here for a couple of things. Number one, the first on my agenda is that everybody that sits up here on the dais, I respect, and I hope they respect me. But I'm getting a little annoyed, and one of the reasons why I stopped coming to council meetings, besides working, is because I don't like to come in here and see the attacks. Everybody in here deserves respect, and I'm a little annoyed at the way Dr. Toffler, Barbara to me, has been treated in the town. I'm a little annoyed that individuals come up here and they speak against her, and then laugh and grin in her face and stab her in the back, as well as people on the council. The other thing is, is that I wanted to speak regarding the four-day week. I haven't had an opportunity to come up and speak, but I've attended several forums, and I've heard council intellects, and I also heard the other individuals say that they're going to look at it and bring back it. I can't see why there can't be flexibility in the town for the employees. I was a director for 30 staff people that ran an emergency family shelter and another shelter. We had people coming in from 7:00 to 3:00, 3:00 to 11:00, 11:00 to 7:00, and it was a 24-hour operation. We never lost services to help those that were in need. Living here in this community, working five days a week, doesn't mean that any employee cannot get what they should have, but they can look at some of the flexibility. The other thing, I want to address something in the community, as far as Mr. Sheen. When people get up here and speak, if you can't say what is the truth, do not speak it at all. Do not speak it if it is not the truth. The other thing, I'm pleased to say that I watch everybody's attitude, I look at their face, and I'm pleased to say that some of you have changed for the period of time that I looked at, the dispositions when individuals get up and talk. You're putting out that you're gonna give respect, that you're gonna look at how people come. Please use it, because I know myself, I will be looking at it. I have to say this to you, Ellie, you did make a statement that you could just about count on your hand people that were interested in the four-day weekend. Well, I can come back here again to you with a lot of signatures of people that are interested in a five-day work week, with flexibility of the staff. So if you're considering that, please look at it. Look at the people in the community that you serve. We elected you, we put you there, look at it. Be honest and open with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am in the back?
Yes. My name is Dolores Spray, and I live here on, in TNEC. I'm basically here, number one, is to find out what is going to be done about our property taxes. Everybody knows that the market is down. Everybody knows that houses are not selling. The revamp was done several years ago, when the market was high. It's no longer high. We're running people out of the township. We need to keep people in our township. We need to bring our young people, so they can come back when they go to college and come here and be able to afford a home. The next thing is, this, I agree, we need a five-day work week. On Fridays, you need to reach out to someone, there's no one available, and we do need to have a five-day work week. On the other hand, Dr. Toffler, and most of you, I know your names, I know who you are. One thing about us, I question diversity here in this town. Do we even know the meaning of diversity? Where is our character? Who are we? We're bringing division into our town. When it's time for election, we see the ugliness come out of people, and we're all supposed to have some guard in us, and we need to start showing it. We need to treat Dr. Toffler with respect. All of us, everybody deserves to have respect. And myself, when I look at my township, I look at our council people, I look at our leaders, from the top down to local government, you have become an embarrassment, an embarrassment. People vote for you. They vote because they want the right thing to be done for all people, everybody. The whole town is made up of diversity. That's what TNEC believes in, diversity. So we need to start showing it. We need to start treating each other with respect. We need to come together. We need to look at TNEC Road and get it cleaned up. Boards on windows, you're driving through the township, it looks bad. We need to send people through the community to make our homeowners clean up their properties. Your houses is your biggest investment, and it's also the face of our town. So we need to really stop. Take a look at ourselves, think about what we're doing, and let's make a difference. Let's make a difference for the people. When you look out here and you see these people, we look at our police department, everything, there's been confusion. Enough is enough. We need to stop it. We need to stop it going forth, and bring our town back to where it should be. Show love. Show that you care. Show that you stand for something. That's it.
Ms. Akri?
I think the first thing, I have a couple of things that I'd like to speak on, but the first thing I'd like to talk about is that we gave the first forum for the candidates, it was a candidate forum, they all were invited, they all came, and we were happy for that. I just want you to know that the community was invited for a question and answer period, and that's what happened. The four-day weekend came up, and because it was put on the agenda at the next meeting, there was this all-hoopla that it had become a political football. I don't think that was what it meant to be. We invite people to come out, to learn, to ask questions, and I think they want answers. And if it, if it needs to be put on the agenda to be discussed, why is it labeled politics? Everything is politics. And the next thing I would like to talk about is something I've talked about before. We do have to really try to maintain this town. When people move here, they move here for a reason. They like the town. I have to say, look at my age, I've spent most of my life in TNEC. I have seen councils come and go, but there are some things I'm seeing I've never seen before, and I'm not liking it. I got an email today from someone, I don't even know what was on it. I think the council needs to see it, and I think it needs to be repudiated. That's what they ask people to do, if there's something that's going on in this township that stinks. It literally stinks. I don't even want to say what was on it, but I don't know this person. So why is he sending me junk emails like this? Because that's exactly what it is. And this is to smear another council member. And what he wants to do with that, I think the council should see it, I think it should be repudiated. And I think we have to take some leadership from you, because you sit there as our spokesman for the community. So if you'd like to see the, see the email, I don't know this person, I'd like to, maybe. But since he thinks he knows me well enough to send me emails like that, I don't appreciate it. I really don't. But it is such a thing that I think it should be repudiated by the leaders of our community, so that this doesn't happen anymore. Thank you.
It's Ron Costello, longtime resident of TNEC. I'm here tonight in a very emotional state tonight, because I'm tired of looking at the Suburbanite and other publications blasting Dr. Toffler. We didn't come here to have people criticize how we do our politics, or whatever. I think the notion that she is the bad girl of this council management should be downplayed, because she's not. She's an honest, hard-working woman, I've known, and I cheer her camp, her campaign, one of her, her, members of her committee. I served it very proudly last time, hope to serve it again proudly this time. What I'm concerned about is that there's so many things that, issues that are more important than that. The trees hanging over people's homes, the debris, it might block a loan, a lady has complained at least 20 times to this council. I've come here as the block captain to complain for the people who feel empowered. They empower me to empower you. I come to you, I went to East, I've been to Dr., I mean, Mr. Browton over there, about a junkyard that's in my, in my view, hasn't been removed yet, and all I can hear is that, well, we keep giving them fines, but nothing ever happens. Two or three years of existence, the same thing sitting there. They have the dumpster on, on Hamilton Place I've complained about. People have called me. The same thing happens again, no resolve whatsoever. I think you need to look around this township and see what people are thinking about. And since Christmas, I've lost four neighbors, since Christmas, within 100 yards of me. New people are coming in, and I've been very instrumental in introducing people to the community, taking them around, and telling them how great this town is. What am I gonna say now? They look at this kind of nonsense every time they turn the TV on. I got them watching TV tonight to see what goes on, so to see for themselves. They're ashamed to come here. They came from New York City, most of them, and they talk about this wonderful town, but they don't see that in reality. I think we need to look at ourselves very carefully and say, well, where are we gonna go from here? I spoke to Mr. Mohammed's father last night for the first time, wonderful man. Spoke to him, he explained about how proud he was, he said, you ought to be proud of your son. He's, 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 he's getting better, first of all. He has improved from time when he started, in my eyesight, anyway. I think he's learning. But I think we need to get away from the politics of the township, get back to the reality. This town needs to move forward with smart development, more concern for the citizenship, seniors, the school board, et cetera. These are issues that we want, lower our taxes, because I just got a tax increase, I mean, decrease, I was happy to get it, because I was overtaxed for so many years, but I accepted that. Fortunately, I can afford it. But those who can't afford it, I've lost about seven neighbors for foreclosures. My neighbor is getting deserted, and I'm tired of looking at empty houses that are not even being kept up. It's an eyesore. And this poor guy with this, with this garage across the street from me, it looks like a sewer over there. And yet, I was told, we can't, because we've given them fines, and we've, what redress do we have? Look at that, every day, and paying $10,000, $12,000 in taxes, look at this debris in your face every single day. I think we need to look around and start doing what the people are asking us to do, and start playing politics with Dr. Toffler and anybody else up here. And let's make the level playing field a real level playing field, and be honest, and take care of business. Thank you.
Last month, the council announced with a certain amount of pomp and circumstance that Mayor Hamidudin had received a recognition for his volunteer work at the Whittier School. And since then, I've gotten an earful from public school supporters who want to know why in the world someone who played an active role in slashing the school budget two years ago could possibly deserve an honor from the Board of Education. So I'm here tonight, first, to defend that the mayor actually deserved to get his apple pin, and, second, to honor two other council members, Lizette Parker and Barbara Toffler, for their work on behalf of our students. So to start with the mayor, I'd like to remind the public of two facts. Yes, Mr. Hamidudin was one of the four councilmen, and it was all the men, who voted to cut the school budget by 6.1 million. the school budget by 6.1 million in 2010. But in his defense, I trust that he believed that he was merely acting on the will of the people who had just defeated the proposed budget at the polls. Also, to give the mayor the benefit of the doubt, he probably had no idea of the extent of permanent, significant damage that cut would do to the schools. In fact, throughout the hearing, the councilman who voted for the cut said repeatedly that they had no idea what it was that they were cutting, but that they were going to cut it anyhow. So parenthetically, this is why we need better communication between the Board of Education and the council, and it's one of the many reasons that I'm supporting current board member Henry Pruitt in his bid for a seat on the council. But that's a digression. The point is that whatever happens to our budget, the Board of Education still has its mission, which is to educate our children. Which brings me to my second point about why the mayor deserved his apple pin. Volunteers are essential to the operation of any school, public or private, and we welcome and are grateful for all the many people who help us with their time, talents, and sometimes even money. The mayor has done his part as an elected official who has an obligation to represent the township and the schools. So why should the board not honor him, just as we have honored more than 150 other residents and even non-residents who have volunteered in our schools this past year alone? Now, in closing, and I'm sorry for taking up so much time, but just one more minute, I want to very briefly spring special attention to two other council people. Councilwomen Parker and Toffler have truly distinguished themselves and brought honor to the council by their tireless mentorship of our high school students. Earlier this month, they were singled out along with Scott Pleasance for their invaluable work by the Board of Education. The mission of the public schools is to do more than simply cram children's heads full of a bunch of facts. It is to help them develop into productive, engaged citizens who will shape the community we will all inhabit in a few short years. And I think we've all heard how important that is. These two women have made a meaningful and lasting contribution to that effort by taking advantage of their roles, both as elected officials and as private citizens, to model true leadership and to help instill the values of service and civic engagement to our young people. I'm disappointed, actually, I'm disturbed that the council chose not to acknowledge their accomplishments tonight, especially after making so much of Mayor Hamidudin's receipt of a golden apple pin last month in advance of the election. But I trust that their acknowledgements will be forthcoming at some meeting after the May 8th election has taken place. Thank you.
One really good thing about TNEC is you don't have to come to a council meeting for about eight months and then you show up and nothing has changed. Nothing has changed. A year and a half ago, people began to ask that we please go back to a five-day week. Today, after eight months of me not being here, we're still asking, can we go back to a five-day week? All right? Two years ago, Art began this campaign after street skate, maybe it was four years ago, to please get bus shelters. I am going to tell you, if this goes another two years, I will have enough emails from Art Vatsky because I get everything he sends out to everybody in this town to fill a county phone book. It will be bigger than that. Why are we still discussing putting bus shelters on Cedar Lane? Folks, we have seven people on this council. Four make a quorum, a majority. If we are still talking about the same crap that I left eight months ago on, we have a problem with the majority. And I don't care who makes up the majority at any given time. We need a bus shelter. I understand. A business person did not want it. The business person does not own TNEC. The taxpayers own TNEC. I have seen little children standing in the pouring rain. For Christ's sake, can we get a bus shelter? Please. If the businessman doesn't like it, he can leave. One businessman is better than a lot of other people leaving town because they're getting really unhappy with the image of this town. I've been traveling a lot. I don't like the image. I don't even tell people I come from TNEC anymore. This isn't funny. Okay? We are known now to be a township where our own town council is dysfunctional. All you do is insult each other. We have the same topics that we have been talking about for two years. Folks, can we put it to bed? Will you please settle these disputes? Give us a bus shelter. Please go back to a five-day week. Scatter them as I asked a year and a half ago. Good Lord, we're still talking about that. And I've been gone eight months. The other thing is workshops. Okay? When this was introduced, that you do away with workshops, my first reaction, and Joan Davis, because I was sitting next to her, looked at each other and I said, there goes all transparency. We will not see any business being done and we will not know how business is being done and the people of TNEC just lost their ability to oversee the workings of their government body. You must go back to workshops because nobody knows how you reach your decisions in a meeting like this. And trust me, I have been watching on TV in the midst of my own other meetings that I've been going to that stop me from going wherever I want to go. So I am asking you, as the leaders, I'm not pointing fingers at who the quorum is at any given time, but we really need to address the business of TNEC and stop you bickering like two-year-olds. Thank you.
First of all, on that calendar that's on the website, I noticed that you did include the plant sale was on there, the garden club plant sale. But there are, and I haven't checked it recently, but, so I don't know what else you've included on that calendar, but I hope that you would include things like the Arbor Day celebration. In other words, we need a mechanism where community groups and boards that are the township boards who are having activities have a way to communicate so that their activities and the dates of those activities can be on that calendar. So I just hope that that will be updated. I, and I agree that we really also need an email, some kind of an email with issues and things that are coming up. I do thank Ellie Katz for his tidbits. That's the way I find out about a lot of things. But I really do agree that it should be a township...